Councilor Brooks.
Present.
Councilor Cogia. Councilor Darren Louts.
Present.
Councilor Harder.
Present.
Councilor.
Present.
Councilor Hayden. Councilor Mack.
Present.
Councilor Tivo Guinness.
Present.
Councilor Sung.
Present.
Councilor Tyros.
Present.
President Exzencius.
Present. Thank you for the public watching this evening. We are meeting informally tonight for a presentation of the FY 2025 school budget. The school budget presentation will be conducted by Gardner Public School Superintendent, Dr. Mark Pellegrino, and Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. Mark Hock. If there are any questions from the City Council during the presentation, it will be at Dr. Pellegrino's discretion to undertake those questions in any discussion. Dr. Pellegrino, go ahead.
Thank you very much, President. Glad to be here, glad to be presenting to you all. I love to talk about education. If I talk too much, you let me know and I'll stop talking so much. But this is our level services budget based on the numbers that we have now from the state from a minimum net, minimum net school spending. So with that, first thing I'd like to talk about is our changing demographics. And the reason I talk about this is some of our populations are considered high needs by the state. High needs includes any of our students who are, come from low-income families, students with disabilities, or our multilingual or English language learners. Those particular populations are considered high needs because they typically need more than just traditional education. When you walk into a classroom and there's a teacher in front of the room, they need more services, which if they need more services, means, means more money as well. So we have to put money to support our students. If we're truly going to be a district that focuses on equity, making sure all of our students learn, we have to make sure that our, our population's needs is driving how we spend our money. So with that, as you can see, the high needs includes any, so any, any student who is either low-income, student, or student with disabilities, or an English language learner, if you come from any of those particular populations, you're considered high needs. And if you can, if you come from multiple, you're also considered high needs. They're not double counted. So those are, those are the numbers, as you can see, they're rising. And actually, if you look down below, our English language learner population is our fastest-growing population, which is really diversifying our, our groups. And it's been, it's actually been a wonderful thing and wonderful addition to our, to our schools. But as you can see, it's actually the number, the actual number has doubled in the last three to four years of students who speak English as a second language. So this is our out-of-district costs. So when students go out of districts, it means that we're, that we need to spend more money. This first number shows how much we're spending on students who are going out of districts, for out-of-district placements, but includes all of our grants and all of the, all of the different monies that go towards that particular population of students with special needs. And so our job is to keep kids in Gardner. The more we keep kids in Gardner, the more they're, they're with their peers, the more they have a traditional school experience. And that's really what we want for our students. We're trying to improve our services here so we keep kids in districts. This is another way students leave, which is school choice. As you can see in red, those are the number, number of students who are leaving the district to go to other districts. And as you can see, we peaked there unfortunately in FY 18. And since that time, we've come steadily down. And we're now at, I think, 162 students who are leaving the districts, and we're taking in 162 students. So we're just about breaking even at this point. And this has been a real focus of what we've been doing.
In 2018, how long had we had GALT? Is that, is that when we opened GALT?
No, GALT opened in 2009.
2009, so okay.
Yep.
I have a question too. So the students that, that 162 students, does that include students that need, because, leave because they need services, or is that school choice by choice?
This is just school choice students. So they're, they're leaving to go to other districts, not including Monty Tech or, or out-of-district placements. Out-of-district placements are still our students.
It's also the online TECA, so forth. It's not just other physical districts.
Which, when I show you the, the numbers, this is how much, when a student goes school choice, how much it's cost us. How much we're taking in is in blue, and how much we're sending out is in orange. And that's a little bit disproportionate. As you can see, it looks like it's, it's not dropping as much as it was in the past. The reason is because TECA, these online programs typically cost $8,500 to send a student school choice to a virtual school. But to send a student school choice to a different brick-and-mortar school is $5,000. I'm not sure why that is. And if any of you can tell me that, please let me know. Yeah.
And I would assume that that's more since 2020. Like it's, people saw it as an option more, it's just something that became the way of life now, I would guess?
Yes, tech has always been, you know, one of the, one of those options for students, but actually as students went, went online, a bunch of students did go online because they had teachers that were doing this. This was their whole system that was, that set up. So some people liked it. Yes.
Do you still allow internally the option of online? I know we had options within.
We do have ingenuity as an online option, yes. Yes.
Is this all grades?
All grades throughout the whole district, yes.
So middle school, we're taking kids in as well, out-of-district kids, it's open?
So, no, actually, so our school choice through grade seven has been closed. We don't have enough space. School choice is really about fitting, filling in the corners, right? So you know, you have your, your class of, say you have enough teachers to support 200 students. And if we only have 150 Gardner students, we could technically take in 50. We would never do that because we have move-ins and there's always things that happen. But we could take in some students to build that up. Right now, our class sizes are pretty much at 25, at the elementary school especially. We're overpopulated from what the census said we were. And when we fought MSBA, they said that we would never go over what the prediction was. But of course, we're already over what the expectation was. Yes.
So with regard to the out-of-district placements, especially for, especially for special education, right?
Yes.
Are, is there, is there additional funding? Is it a requirement, is it a federal requirement to, if you can't provide the services to, to be able to provide them in another place or to, to send a student? I know that's part of the increased cost, right, to the district is sending students, but also transporting students, right?
Yes.
Is there, are there additional dollars coming in from the federal government to support that?
Just through on what they have, a circuit breaker. And right now, they're looking at, what's it called, extreme relief?
Extreme relief and extraordinary relief.
Yes. That's right, there's a second, there's actually a second level. I know it sounds like a joke, but it was actually second, the second level. So, yeah, so out-of-district placement, what we're trying to do is make sure we've, we've been increasing our services. And that's the next slide that I'll, actually, if you, oh, actually, do you have another question?
No, you're good.
Okay. So this is specifically our out-of-district placement costs. We've been funding a lot of positions to increase our supports in the schools to try to address students' needs in district. Because again, we keep them in districts. Not only is it better for the kids, but it also saves money. So when you look at the current state of affairs, we actually had a million-dollar increase in our out-of-district placements this year. And a lot of that had to do with some students who moved into the district. And some students that we did have that were just expanding beyond what we were able to provide. So went up a million dollars, yes.
Does that also have to do with the rising cost of everything else in the world being?
Great question, yes. The, the out-of-district placement organizations basically set their rate. They have to have it approved by the state, but they went up, do you know what some of the percentages were off the top of your head? Caps and...
Eight and 12%.
What's that?
Eight and 12% on some of them.
Thank you.
We, we had to really fight our local collaborative to keep our rate down by, to eight percent. So a lot of, a lot of them are costing more and more. And that's just across the board, yes, because the rise of cost of everything. So a short answer would have been that.
I like a long answer.
So I'd just like to really talk about the Student Opportunity Act. This was something in 2015. Gardner was seen as underfunded by $3 million at the time because we had populations of students, English language learners, our students with special needs, and our students from low-income families who, again, need more. We should be getting more money for, for those particular populations. And what they found was, we were underfunded by $3 million in 2015 money. And so when you, when you think about that, how did we, how did we make that up? Well, we typically made it up by not having as many maintenance folks, not taking care of the buildings. What would happen is our compliance issues would take priority, would have to, would have to fund those things by law and for our students. And it was to the detriment of some, some of the other categories. So they, for the Student Opportunity Act, they realized that our funding formula was way off. And they've recognized that. And they've started saying, okay, the state and the, and the cities need to put more towards these, but, these high-needs school districts to make sure that they're funded. Because their, the tagline is, your ZIP code should not affect what your educational experience is. So again, looking at that, we have $3 million under budget at that time. And so they've been really putting a lot more funding into the schools. And that's why you've seen, for the local contribution going up, it's gone up considerably over the last few years. And that's because the Student Opportunity Act has dictated that. So in, in February, we pulled together stakeholders. Some of you folks came. We had school community members, parents, a couple of students. Forty folks came together and we actually looked at, so who are the, who are the students in our districts who are most disenfranchised? And we identified students with disabilities, English language learners, economically disadvantaged students, Hispanic and Latinx students, and African-American students have the, have the most disparate outcomes. And so when we're looking at the funding, we should be putting funding to make sure that we're supporting the needs of those particular populations. And this is a requirement by the state that we do something to make sure that we do this. We don't just do a survey, which other districts do. I find that coming, bringing people together and actually looking at the data and looking at what, what we're all about is a better way to do this. So over the next three years, to support the academic and social-emotional development of students, our budget will support $2.58 million over the next three years. This is something that, again, the state requires us to disclose to them. That's not new money. A lot of that's money that we're already spending in the district. And then the use of the MTSS process for students specifically with sub-populations that are marginalized, which includes students with disabilities, again, multilingual learners, and, and to make, to make sure that they're supported better, it's $4.7 million. And again, a lot of that is money that we're already spending because we've improved through ESSER funds. We've already increased the number of staff. And I'll show you how much, actually, this next slide. So since I've been superintendent, we've hired 62 service positions. That means stu-, staff that are in the classrooms or in the buildings directly supporting students, or taking care of our buildings. We've, we have actually increased our, our maintenance staff as well. And I've hired 10 administrative staff. Some of those staff are by grants, some are requirements. With an English learner population, over 200 now, we're required by the state to have a director of English, of English language learners. Any questions on that? So if you look at these positions, you'll see that they're really supporting students with special needs and English language learners. That's where the main focus is. The way we develop our, our budget is we put everybody in a room and we actually make them go through the process of cutting their budget by a certain amount. I think we made them cut 150,000, was that what it was? From their budget. And then they also have to list, well, what are your needs? And we all get together in the room. And this is everybody from the district, all the principals from the district and all the directors. And we all make decisions together on, okay, so if we cut these positions and we have these needs, what's the most important position to go in first? And we actually go through this exercise to say, what are the most important positions to make sure that our money is supporting our kids the best that it can? So there are sometimes some arguments, some disagreements, but we get through it. We all come to consensus on how to make sure we're using our funds to support whichever school. So for example, Paula Volger might say, you know what? I'm, you know, I have a position up here. I'm not going to fund that first over, say, a kindergarten teacher. So we make those decisions. And what I like about it is it's a district-wide process, not an individual, well, how am I, what do I need at my school? It's what do we need in Gardner? All right. In balancing the budget, this is where I stop talking. And the eloquence, Mr. Hock will now take over.
So this is just the total funding numbers, the net school spending. You take out the, the net school spending, which is mainly transportation, city indirect costs, which is the bulk of that is the retirement and health insurance. And you have your total net school spending. And that minus $1 is just a rounding of pennies. So it is a balanced budget. We're not off by a dollar. So that's good news. So where did the money go? On the left, you'll see the new revenue. Chapter 70, under the Student Opportunity Act, increased $2.2 million. We fared better than the vast majority of districts across the state. I'm sure you've all seen the headlines about school funding being cut everywhere, teachers being laid off. We were able to avoid that in Gardner. The net school spending number, that's the city's obligation, that is increased by a formula by DESI, went up $647,000. And then this year, to help balance out the budget, we're getting a, for the aforementioned migrant population, $104 a day per student, per day they're in district. So we're going to be using $160,000 of that. We have that money right now. Everything is subject to appropriation on Beacon Hill. How long that continues? I don't know. How long the migrant issues continue? I don't know. So we have that money in hand. That's why I know we can count on that. And then the $15,000 was from FY 24. The new expenses, you'll see the salaries at 1.2, expenses at almost 2.2. Additions, we added 225,000 less than the previous year. Non-net school spending, it's a deduct because it's a pass-through. It's funded by the city. And it doesn't count towards net school spending. So that's why it's shown as a negative there. And then the indirects increased 575,000, which again, is mainly health insurance and other insurances. The 225,000 less, this is what was left over. This was not an addition. This was something that was required this year. And we thought we should be fully transparent and show that this is a new-ish position. It's only been added in the last couple of months. So that's why it's shown here as an addition. The salary numbers, you can see, this is through a DESI breakdown between regular, special ed, support services, school administration, central administration, IT. You'll see that IT is now down to zero. That's because it is now fully outsourced. So that's just showing the general areas of increases or the decrease. And the expenses, a big one there, out-of-district placement, of course, 732,000. And transportation is the, what's I say, 607,000? Those would be the, 697?
Ninety.
Ninety-seven?
Ninety-seven, yeah.
Those would be the, the largest increases in expenses. This one is always fun, the costs that don't apply. So the regular transportation are the big yellow buses. McKinney-Vento foster care and special education transportation, the state just makes us count it three different ways, depending if they're foster care, homeless, that's what McKinney-Vento is, or special education. Crossing guard expense. And then to keep up with the minimum wage, the slight increase of $11,000 for the crossing guards in the district. So where's the money coming from? Again, chapter 70, the net school spending and the homeless emergency money, that's the migrant money, $104 a day. That's how we get to the 41.5. The net school spending over net school spending, this is where it's really hurt us in the past couple of years. We haven't been above net school spending. So the SOA has bailed us out with the additional funding in chapter 70. But I think we're coming to the end of that very soon, unfortunately. So this year, we have a funding gap of $0. Previous years, that was a negative number. We made it up through ESSER. We did not credit, this was prior to me, so credit to Dr. Pellegrino. We don't have that ESSER cliff. We didn't build up salaries with the thought that all the money just keeps flowing. They, they did it smartly. And they did it so that the SOA money came in as the ESSER money finished. And that's why we have no layoffs. And we're in a decent spot as I speak today, subject to change and appropriation. This really isn't for you, but this is the last slide. This is the same presentation we gave to the school committee into the public welfare. If you guys don't have to vote, but you can discuss.
Any questions, Congress?
I have a question. I know that some of the union contracts are up for negotiation. What was budgeted for non-union employees for raises?
Non-union, 2%.
Any other questions, Congress? Any further discussion?
So, so, yeah, sorry.
What I understand is that the regular transportation contract, we're in the final year, or next year will be the final year?
This is, yeah, FY 25.
FY 25 is the final year. So then FY 26, a year from now, there will likely be an increase.
Oh, I think that's, I was betting on it.
Okay.
I didn't want to see a substantial increase. We're paying in FY 25, $395 a day per bus. Which according to a lot of the districts that are now in the 420 to 450 per day per bus.
Can we get bigger buses?
Bigger boats and bigger buses, that's what we need.
And from what I understand, the way we, in the city of Gardner, the way we've been funding the school department is this net school spending plus transportation. So the plus transportation is on the city or on the mayor to get, the city to give you the money to do that. Correct?
Transportation is a city expense that's just put into the school funding budget.
We don't have any flexi-, we have very little flexibility on it.
Oh, you get all the flexibility, what, up to 63.
Well, we're not going to go there.
K through six funding, the transportation is mandated. Above that is optional.
Correct. I think I remember I'm there. I was there. I was there, Mr. Hock. I was there.
Yeah, what's interesting is you would never save this, like, we already have, if you already have the buses rolling, there's the same buses that would be going to the high school. So you don't really save. You can save a run per day. So it's much, it's much less.
But the expectation in the city budget for FY 26 is that there's going to be a jump in regular transportation.
I, I think there's going to be a jump in regular transportation. You know, the other thing that's a, that's a question mark, this year with the Student Opportunity Act, they only, in, in the legislation, they capped inflation at 4.3, 4.5%. And inflation was 11% this year. What's helped us, you know, and I just want to make sure that I'm really clear with folks, we're able to get through this year. And a lot of that has to do with the fact that we had ESSER money. So we're able to pull this off this year, but there was a $640,000 increase to the city. That's, that's greater than we typically have. Next year, it's probably going to be about the same. And the part that we really didn't plan on was actually falling under the, above net school spending. We were, we were kind of planning on having a little bit more than that. And so next year, if we, if we just get an increase, that really, actually, really depends, there's a lot of ifs for next year. We have no idea what it's going to look like. We have no idea if they'll actually fund, fund us better and differently. But this could increase a great deal if we're going to keep a level spending for next year. So I just want to put that in everybody's...
One point on that, the way it used to roll in chapter 70 is there was a cap for inflation. And let's say this year, it's at 11%, then they would cap it. But then next year, they would include that 11%. And then if it went on and capped, again, it would be capped. What they did with the SOA, right, wrong, or indifferent, and they're now looking at it, is they never made up for that. So that 7% that we're missing, they're not going to make up for that. Or they haven't made up for it yet. So it's a year-over-year hit, which is why the $2 million for Gardner was one of the biggest ones in the Commonwealth. I think we're in the top 20 for actual dollars received. That's why you'll see in the, the state budget, I think the governor had $30 per student minimum aid increase. And I think the House or Senate went up to $130. So that means absolutely nothing to us because we got well over that. But the well-to-do communities that may not need it as much as us are getting a much larger increase.
I had a question. Regarding school choice, and I heard you say the mid-school is capped, is not taking anymore?
Correct.
So the existing can stay?
Oh, yes, yeah.
So here's my, my question is, with the new elementary school, did we see a huge influx with school choice at the elementary level?
No, because we haven't been accepting them.
So we haven't at the elementary level?
No, no. I'm sorry, right, so K to, K to seven.
Okay, seven.
Is, we have not been accepting the school choice because we knew our numbers were, were growing. We have now, you know, it used to be traditionally, no matter, no matter what, you had eight teachers in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade. They had eight teachers, all the way through seventh grade. We right now have nine kindergarten classes. We have nine first-grade classes. I'm thinking there's eight still in grade one. But we've been, and that's just residents.
But here, here's my question then. If we're sending out more students than we're taking in, why aren't we taking in more students to even that out?
We're actually breaking about even. We're taking in about 162 students.
I saw the numbers, it's like 30 different, right?
Seven. Is it, how, 162 in, 169 out?
Oh, so it's like seven, okay, yeah.
Yeah. And so that's, and that's, that's, that's at the high school, mostly. So, yeah, there's just not, there's not a lot of room. And feeling, you know, to be clear, the way school choice works, if, say you're getting $17,000 per student, and that's the foundation formula. With, with, with school choice, if we're getting a school choice student in, we get $5,000. The sending districts will keep the other 12. So ultimately, even if we have students going out, we're keeping a bulk of our, of our, of our, of our money. So how, getting $5,000 to educate a student is nowhere near what we need. And there are districts that are hurting right now because they've relied so much on school choice. And their numbers have gone down because districts like, like this year, we had 100 students apply to our early college program. I'm thrilled. We'll probably have 35% of our population graduating with college credits under their belt. Typically, they're taking between three and five courses per semester. So I'm thrilled with that. And I think that's helped keep kids in the districts. Yeah.
Question, based off what you just said, you know, just, my nephew took advantage, full advantage of the ruble.
Excellent.
Yeah, he just graduated two weeks ago. Ken saw, say, you know, he would have two more years if he didn't do the early college. He don't have the treasure on him. So, but with that being said, with the new programs that the high schools offer, is it true, I would say, kids are staying because of the new programs? I, I can't think of what I'm talking about.
So we've had, so I can't, I can't say that definitively. We probably should do a survey. I mean, it would probably be good to do. But we do have anecdotal evidence. We've had, we've had folks come to us and say, I was going to send my kid to Monty Tech. That was my plan from the beginning. But I saw this early college program and they're keeping them, they're staying in district.
So that's exactly what I'm asking. It's because that same thing came to me. You know, I do with a lot of kids. And it's the same exact thing, like, oh, you know, Gardner's off, I miss this awesome. I'm like, yeah, it really is. So, you know, like, that's, you know, I was looking, and I'm interested in the numbers on that part because I know, you know, I've had a conversation with him once, twice, you know, more than once.
We do have in headfirst early college too. So, and a lot of that funding, by the way, is, is through the state. The state's giving them $180 or $190 per credit per student. So a lot of this has become free in this wonderful, this wonderful program. And I will say, we've done it, we do it beyond all the other districts. The other districts around here of early college, nothing like ours. Nothing like ours.
So in 169, does that include the Monty Tech students or no?
No.
That doesn't, okay.
No. But actually, this year, I'm, I'm very excited. No, but actually, this year, I'm, I'm very excited. Typically, we have from the high school, 70, some odd students apply, 76, 75 students apply to Monty Tech. This year, 37 students applied, and those are kids who want to get a vocation. Kids are staying at the high school because there are other options like this. So I'm, I'm really proud of that, and I think our partnership with Mount Watch Use Community College has just been a huge boon and allowed us to do things that most other high schools just can't do. We had 50 some odd students, 52 or 53 students graduate with associate degrees and diplomas last year. That's huge, and especially for students who come from low-income families, what a boost that is for them.
So I just want to go back to the transportation budget. What is, what percentage of that is out of, students having to be transported out of district? And I'm wondering if you could say a little bit more about what the Gardner Police Schools is doing to keep students from, from doing.
From needing out of district. Okay, so first of all, there is a special, there is a, I don't like to use the word, it says sped transportation up there, that's because that's what the state calls it, that's the budget line item. But the special education transportation budget is actually pulled out. So it's, again, a large increase. If, but if you look at transport, so your first question is, how are we keeping kids in district? My first year superintendent, we switched over students who are in our substantially separate rooms, who are our highest need students. We used to have paraprofessionals in those rooms. Paraprofessionals are wonderful folks who, who come to us, and it's an entry-level position. And they're not provided a lot of training. We actually changed that over to what we call registered behavioral technicians. The level might still be the same, it's an entry-level position. However, they get intense coursework that we pay for. It's 13,000 dollars, and we wind up having these folks learn these very specific skills. They have to work under what we call the behavioral, board-certified behavior, CVA, board-certified behavioral analyst. And they're working with our substantially separate students. And we were doing a, a much better job of keeping kids in district. Quite frankly, if we hadn't boosted those numbers and really invested a lot in, in those particular rooms, that's where, because that's the last stop. The kid has very specific needs and they're very high-level needs, they would wind up in a, working again through an IEP process that's very, you know, highly regulated. They would wind up in a, in a substantially separate room before going to an out-of-district placement. And then if they're not making progress in that substantially separate room, then they would go out of district placement. But if a student moves into district and they're already out of district place, they're ours. And so we're just automatically paying that money.
Thank you. Just one quick question, because we've been talking about the five-year contract. Does that apply just to the regular transportation or the other transportation lines as well?
Just regular.
Thank you.
How many active students are at a district special education?
The number? You know what, I don't know, that'd be on my head.
Close to 200, I guess. Trying to remember from some of the reports.
200?
I would say close to it if I had to guess, but.
I guess another question would be, do a lot who go to the same school?
It really depends, it's individualized. So, you know, we do have, we do have, we are part of the collaborative for Keystone Collaborative, and we're part of CAPS Collaborative. So though, because we're part of those organizations, we're on the, I'm on the board for those two organizations, and they try to keep the cost lower for us. But ultimately, if they need to go to Boston, they need to go to Boston.
Dr. Pellegrino, I apologize for looking away from you while I ask my question.
That's okay.
For the microphone, but my question's about the early college program and if there has been any noticed or seen impact to the AP or honors programs at the high school. As someone who's still had an occasional nightmare about Mr. Martin's AP USG prompts that have fortified my writing under pressure, which I'll thank him for, but I was just curious about that, because it is a state program that could, you know, change.
Yeah, yeah, the AP program, we still have, I want to say 15. We might've, we might've cut one or two. And again, that's more AP courses than all the other districts around here. Even when there's only a few students going for that, that program, we believe that it's important to run those classes, so we've continued to run those classes. I think Paula has a cutoff, you might know better than me, Judy has like three.
Eighty to three or four.
Yeah.
And I'm going to speak to that a little bit because, you know, you have, you know, you have to score the four or five on the AP exam to get those credits accepted, whereas at the early college, a senior better is transferable. You know, some places it has to be AB, but those students can double up instead of taking one class in an academic year, they can take two. So they're really getting more for their dollar if they're going to go to a state college, university. So we found that, you know, a lot of them are better off with the early college program, except for your select universities still want to see those AP credits. And a lot of the students, the way the master scheduling is done at the high school, is they're allowed to take their early college classes in the morning, and such thing as the sciences, they're, and calculus are intentionally scheduled in the afternoon so the kids get to take both.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Just to add on to the over net school spending slide that was in this proposal, too. One of the reasons that we've had some funding constraints on the city side of things is that when the Student Opportunity Act was put into place, yes, it's, it did substantially increase how much we were getting in chapter 70, but it also substantially increased what our minimum contribution was towards chapter 70. So the funding we were putting in was now going towards regular net school spending, whether over net school spending, but at the same time, our costs were going up. And it just made it so that we couldn't keep up with those. So that's why we haven't been able to go over net school spending for this fiscal year and this fiscal year. This isn't something that's unique to Gardner. In fact, so much so that the Massachusetts Municipal Association is now putting out a survey to all the cities and towns across Massachusetts, asking what the budget situation is for this year and if it's because of the school districts, and does that mean teacher layoffs in those districts? Because there's probably a handful, if not less than 10, districts in Massachusetts right now that aren't looking at teacher layoffs this year, and Gardner is one of those districts that is not because we planned for that ahead, thanks to, again, the superintendent's worth thinking. But that's, the increases in the minimum required spending does make it so that we are facing funding constraints. Just because we aren't laying someone off doesn't mean we aren't deferring maintenance on certain things, or pushing back programs on certain things, or planning forward on figuring out how we're going to pay for certain aspects like the transportation costs. Because again, our, our costs have just gone up, and the minimum pricing that we have to pay also goes up. Director Hock pointed out that the governor's budget that she released in January had the statutory minimum of 30 dollars per student. The House and the Senate did release their budgets, increasing that 30 dollars to 104 dollars per student. There's now a budget amendment in the Senate to get that to 110 dollars per student. So again, all of those fluctuate on how much we can do, too. But, I mean, when the average cost to educate a student a year is ballpark, 5,000 dollars per student, and I'm saying ballpark because that's low, because that's what we get when we get a student coming in, and the average property tax bill in the city is 4,400 dollars. It's one of those that, when we talked about revenue last week, just ways that we have to bring revenue in and work on how we can get back over net school spending eventually, but we have to live within our means and there's only certain things that we can do. So we'll at least stay where we need to be and hopefully come up with a plan to get over that later on, but we'll do what we can in between. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Further questions, comments from the council or superintendent or the director?
One last point to Councilor Brooks. This slide was created in the middle of March when we were doing the presentation to the school committee. So you see the regular transportation line of 782. That's because we asked for an additional bus. Wasn't able to be funded, so that is down, so there you go. Reducing that from 670 to 600.
Wait, my notes do say that. It's down to 711, same as last year.
Thank you.
Anything further? I would just like to say, and I, I know it's been mentioned in a lot of different ways tonight, but I think it's important for the public to know that we are in a really good spot here in terms of not having to lay off people, and it's because of the good planning by the school committee, by the superintendent, by Director Hock, and how we do this, working with the mayor's office and auditor and everyone. I mean, this is, the things you see on the news and all the things you hear about with a number of districts compared to the ones that don't have to worry and won't, being one of them, you know, it's a testament to the good work that we do here in planning and thinking ahead. And we've always kind of said, we don't, we don't, well, the last few years, I mean, since I've been a counselor, I haven't been more attentive to it, obviously. We don't fund things with, you know, long-term items with one-time money, and that's, that's worked out for us in this case for sure. And I know it was part of this kind of long-term strategic, strategic plan that we had even before COVID. So I really appreciate all the work that your offices have put in, that the school committees put in to building this budget, because I don't think people also realize this, this is a month-long process before you even get to the school committee vote and, you know, before it was presented to the public welfare committee and out of the council. This is, this has developed over many, many months since the fall, pretty much, and it's for us to get here and then to our vote in a couple of weeks, so thank you for that.
Did you say one thing?
Yeah.
I was just texting, I wasn't trying to be rude, I was texting Joyce West, my special ed director. You must be thinking dollars. I was wondering why you were saying 229 students are out of district placement. You must be thinking of.
Oh, I was going transportation, sorry.
Yeah.
That's what that was.
So 29 students.
Like, really? Since I was on the school committee, I remember it was like 17 to 26.
I had one of the numbers right. I had one of the numbers right.
Divide by 10.
Anything further, any questions, comments, any further information to share on the topic of the meeting? Here, thank you again on behalf of the city council. Thank you, Dr. Pellegrino. Thank you, Director Hock, for being here this evening, hearing nothing. We will close this part of the meeting, and we convene at 7:30 PM for our regular meeting. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.